With beautiful surroundings, comfortable gathering spaces, and picturesque views, the campus of Atria Woodbrier offers the standard of senior living, long preferred by the most discerning older adults on Cape Cod. Atria Woodbrier Place, a new state-of-the-art building, offers independent and assisted living options with luxurious amenities and environmentally friendly design and construction. Atria Woodbrier, 389 Gifford Street, Falmouth, 508-495-5500.
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure. You can call us at 508-563-7366, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, May 19, 2014, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. The board is returning from executive session into open session. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few procedural announcements before we begin. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise, we ask that you silence it or turn it off for the duration of your time here with us. If you wish to speak this evening, and there will be opportunities for public comment, we ask that you adhere to our speakers policy, a copy of which is on the door into the room as well as on the lectern. If you would like to speak, please wait to be acknowledged by the chair. When you are acknowledged, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but our recording secretary may not, as well as the folks at home. If you choose to leave before the meeting concludes, remember that the meeting has not yet concluded, so we ask that you leave quietly so that we can continue our business. If you'd like to record the meeting, you may do so, audio or video. Audio requires simply an announcement that you wish to do so. Video does require permission from the board. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to record this meeting using audio or video? Hearing none. The first item on our agenda, we have announcements. Selectman Flynn will be joining us later. I want to make sure everyone is aware that tomorrow is voting day for the town of Falmouth, the Springtown elections. The voting locations for Precinct 1 is Town Hall; for Precinct 2 is the Recreation Center, the Gus Canty Recreation Center. Precincts 3 and 4 will now be voting at Falmouth High School. Precinct 5 is voting at the North Falmouth Congregational Church. Precinct 6 is also voting now at the Falmouth High School. Precinct 7 votes at the Wacoit Congregational Church. Precinct 8 votes at the Portuguese American Club, the Navigator. And Precinct 9 also votes at the Falmouth High School. I have heard some word that folks are a little upset with the change in polling places, and I would encourage everyone to vote. Nevertheless, you don't make change by staying home and complaining. You have to get out and make your voice heard, and you do that by voting. On our agenda this evening, we have two items for the Silver Shores shanty, and those have been withdrawn by the applicant, so if you're here for that this evening, we will not be covering that. Also, we have announcements with regards to vacancies. The term limits, or the terms, excuse me, for all of the committees, commissions, and boards that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen expire on June 30th. And there are a very long list of individuals whose term expires and have asked for reappointment. I'm not going to list off the various openings, because there are some openings as well on some of these committees, but I would like the public to know and to apply for the openings. Just because there is someone in that position now does not mean that they will necessarily be reappointed. And in particular, aside from the vacancies, there are also, and I will specifically itemize these, there are also individuals who have termed out. In other words, they have reached the end of their terms and therefore will have to step down. They have reached three terms of three years. On the Agricultural Commission, there is going to be a vacancy. On the Bike Ways Committee, there will be a vacancy. There will be another vacancy on the Building Code Board of Appeals. There are going to be two vacancies on the Conservation Commission, one on the Community Preservation Committee, two vacancies on the Energy Committee, one on the Recreation Committee, one on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and two on the Waterways Committees. These are vacancies that will happen because these individuals have termed out, and these are in addition to any terms that are expiring, as well as any vacancies that already exist. So I can't state enough. We invite the public to apply, come to the Town Manager and Selectmen's office, fill out an application, and interviews will be conducted during the month of June. Are there any other announcements from the board? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. It was 11 years ago tomorrow that I was first elected to the Board of Selectmen. It seems like quite a time ago, but I also want to thank everybody in this community. It has been an honor and a privilege for me to serve the folks of this community. This is a job that I have truly loved. It has been trying on my family and then sometimes my friends. Those of us who seek political office have to understand that everything we do and say can be construed in any form or fashion. And I can tell folks out there that I have worked diligently to try to do the best that I possibly can. I've tried to represent folks from Woods Hole to Wacoit, from T-Ticket to North Falmouth, from Surf Drive to Silver Beach. I've tried to represent everybody in this community. This job is not always an easy job. I ask that folks judge me over the years of not any one vote, but judge me collectively in the votes that I've made to help make this a better community. I can surely tell you that my wonderful wife has said to me some evenings when I came home, "Why did you make that vote?" I have questioned some of the votes I've made over the years, but I'm only human, and I have worked hard to try to make the right decisions with the information that I had at the time. There is one thing that you know that you can be assured of, that over the years that Kevin Murphy has done the homework before he's walked into this room. I have worked diligently to know the facts, investigate both sides of an issue. I've talked to people, and I've worked with the Town Manager's Office as well as the wonderful employees in this community. With that being said, I'd like to thank each and everybody that I've served with in this office. We bring to the table, as members of the Board of Selectmen, different thoughts and viewpoints, but I honestly have been able to say that, over the years while I've served, I've thought that the boards I've worked with have been able to come together and find middle ground to move this town forward. Falmouth is truly a wonderful place. I hope to grow old here. The last 11 years are probably maybe a little older than I want it to be, but I will say that I will be around. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Town Manager's Office, the women, Diane, Carolyn, and even Carol Kenny, who was here originally when I -- Kelly, originally when I started, Heather and Julian, for all of their help and assistance, and the town employees in this community who go above and beyond the call of duty. I can say that it's easy to criticize the folks that work in government, the folks that work for your municipality, because they're under the microscope. Everyone knows when they get a coffee. Everyone knows what they do in their private lives, but I think we have a lot of valued employees in this community. That being said, I'm not going to belabor things, because that has probably been one of my faults. I talk too much. But to each and every one of you, I thank you, and I look forward to living in this community a long time and staying involved. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other announcements from the board or the Town Manager's Office?
No, sir.
I don't have any statement prepared myself, actually, but I suppose it would be an obligatory comment on my part to remind everyone that my term also expires. And as of this time tomorrow night, there will be two new members of the board. I said a few words at town meeting, and I'll let those stand. It has been an honor and a pleasure serving all of you and serving with all of you over the last six years. So as Mr. Murphy noted, I'm not going to go away, but unfortunately, I just don't have the time to devote to this. So I'll see you out there. Mr. Jones?
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Vice Chair and the town employees, I'd like to express our appreciation to the years and years and hours of service that the two of you have given to the Board of Selectmen. We certainly hope you do not go away. We hope that your phones will be available for us to call. We are going to have questions. We're going to need your years of knowledge and experience, and hope that you'll keep an open door so we can come. And certainly, you know how to reach us. So if you find votes that you think we're wrong on, please let us know right away, and that we really -- the town is indebted to people being willing to put that many years forward as members on the Board of Selectmen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. All right, and with that, that brings us to our public comment period this evening. We reserve 10 minutes every Monday for comments from the public for any items that are not on the agenda. It is two minutes per person and a maximum of 10 minutes so that we can move on to the other items on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Going once. Going twice. All right, thank you, folks. Next item on the agenda, we have minutes of meetings. We have the May 5 public session.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the meetings of May 5 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 5 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And then the executive session also for May 5.
I would move approval, but I think we cannot release it these times dealing with the negotiations with non-union personnel. Is that still being worked out?
Yes, I think we should delay releasing that.
Okay, so I move that we approve and not release.
Approve and not release, and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And then we have the summary of actions. I'm going to read through these. If anyone would like to hold it, please let me know. We have the fiscal year '15 land grant application for the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. We have a request for Sunday entertainment license to Bartlesville County Fair. Request for flashing crosswalk slash golf cart crossing signs on Quissett Avenue. Item forced to authorize the Town Manager to issue a letter to Mass Housing regarding the application of Minot Beach Realty Trust. Item number five is a request for the use of Surf Drive Beach, a wedding ceremony, Laduke Skabeli, Saturday, May 31, 2014. Item number six, a request for the use of the Surf Drive Beach parking lot, wedding parking, Fleet, Saturday, June 7, 2014. Item number seven is a request for use of the Surf Drive Beach parking lot for wedding parking, Adamo Lewis, Saturday, June 14, 2014. And finally, we have a request for the use of Old Silver Beach, wedding ceremony, Mackin, Saturday, June 28, 2014.
I'd move items 1 through 8.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items 1 through 8. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. And we have the next item on our agenda is the vote to affirm the appointment of the Director of Assessing. Mr. Sussa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure as Town Manager to appoint Patricia Favulli as Director of Assessing for the town of Falmouth. Tricia is the best candidate from among those who have responded to our public advertising and posting of this very important position. She has served very well as acting assessor since our previous assessor left to accept a position elsewhere. Tricia is serving as an important part of the finance team, working in close cooperation with Finance Director Jennifer Petit, who, due to a prior commitment, is unable to join us this evening. I am therefore respectfully requesting that the board vote to affirm my appointment of Patricia Favulli as Director of Assessing. I thank you for your consideration. Tricia is here with us this evening and is available to make a few comments to the board.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and the Finance Director for their support in my application for this position. The door is always open. If anybody has any questions, please knock on the door and come in, or pick up the phone and call. We're always there for you and for the public.
Questions from the board? This is the appointment of the Town Manager, but as per the town charter, we must approve director-level appointments, so...
I'll make a motion to affirm the appointment of Tricia Favulli as Director of Assessing.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just think there was a lot of information for us, and I thank you for that, and your number of years that you've already spent in Falmouth. So I feel I don't -- all my questions have been answered in the materials that you sent, and I thank you for that.
Okay. Just want to make one other comment. It's evident, not only in her involvement in the job that she does, but the involvement in this community. She's served many years on the zoning board of appeals, been involved in this community day in and day out. I think that's indicative of what our public employees do here in the town of Falmouth.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Congratulations, unanimous.
Thank you. I do have... We also have an opening on the Board of Assessors. We have one opening, and we have one person leaving to a term limit. So if there's a full audience tonight, if anybody is so interested, we would love to have some new members on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a continued discussion regarding the Ballymead capital assessment. We have, just so everyone understands, we did ask some questions of our town council. He's going to provide us with a brief presentation and answer to those questions. And I believe the folks from Ballymead have a presentation they would like to make. We will, after the Ballymead presentation, hear from the general public, any comments or questions that you folks have, and then the board is going to have to take this under advisement. I want to make sure everybody understands the process, because once the board starts discussing, I really don't want to have people jumping up and asking to speak again. So if you would like to speak on this matter, the opportunity will be there, but once the board starts deliberating, I'm not going to be taking any more public comment. So, Mr. Duffy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If I may just take a minute to recognize you, Mr. Pottemore and Mr. Murphy. I have served with you in town government for quite some time now, and I understand the job of selectmen and how difficult it is and how much time and effort you have to put in. So I personally would like to thank you folks for your service, and I appreciate it, and you deserve all the accolades that you get when your term is over. So thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
You asked a question about -- I'm following up on Article 32 of the 2003 annual town meeting. Town meeting appropriated $530,000 to connect Ballymead to the new elevated tanks in Tech Park. And the article, which appeared in the warrant, said that "The costs shall be recovered in part by betterment assessment." And I just want to clarify that by the time that article went through the washing machine and came out of town meeting, it had actually changed, and it had changed substantially based upon a recommendation of the Finance Committee. The -- as you can see from the recommendation that Heather has here, they talk about -- this is the recommendation of the Finance Committee in the middle of the page there, and there's a highlighted section down at the bottom that's undermined. "The cost of said improvement to be recovered by a capital improvement fee to be determined by the Board of Selectmen and collected from the owners of property benefiting from this improvement as an additional charge on water bills or as an entrance fee to connect to the town water system." So the reference in the article to the betterment was changed to a capital improvement fee, and it also specifically authorized the Board of Selectmen to collect it as an additional charge in the water bill to the owners of property up there. Now, I had presented to you, the last time I was here, a draft vote in which referenced the changes to the town that the town meeting actually made to the article. Here's a copy of Article 32, and as you can see, the recommended language comes through in the final vote with the caveat at the end that further that no money should be expended under this article until such time as the Board of Selectmen have determined and established a program to collect the capital improvement fee. So the point I'd like to make is that the -- two things. One, the betterment was changed to a capital improvement fee. The important part about it is fees are set by the Board of Selectmen, and it specifically authorizes the Board of Selectmen to set the fee and charge the water users in Ballymead The provision about the expenditure of the money didn't happen. I think it can be explained. There were a series of negotiations that went on over a long period of time. The implementation of the fee was something that was discussed for some time, but it was never actually determined. That's why we're here today, some 11 years later. But nevertheless, you're authorized by town meeting, and that authorization has not gone away or has not been diminished by the passage of time. Point, Article 32 specifically authorizes the Board of Selectmen to determine and establish the capital improvement fee, and this is part of your general superintendent's fees over at the town of Falmouth and the ability to charge fees for water service. If anybody is unhappy with this fee or feels that the town meeting vote should be rescinded or amended in some way, there's a town meeting in November. Get an article before the town meeting, and it can be discussed, and we'll leave it up to town meeting to determine if a change should be made. Another change that is made is that the word "in part," which appeared in the warrant article, does not appear in the final vote. So the Selectmen have authority to collect the entire amount of the capital improvement fee as part of their vote here tonight. The principal amount of the capital improvement fee is $357,939.61. A question was asked about whether the Board of Selectmen could provide for a discount for certain individuals who wanted to immediately make payment in full. I believe a couple of people who were here the last time said that if this capital improvement fee is implemented, that may be an option they would like. You do have that option to do that. If you're so inclined to do it, you may make that option. That would be to offer a discount for immediate payment in full. You also have the right to determine when the fee shall be collected, whether it would be collected on the water bill that goes in November of 2014 or May of 2015. This is basically a policy decision for you folks to make. So I do have, it's basically unchanged from the one I gave you last week, the proposed capital improvement fee vote, principal of $357,939.61. Interest is 3%, which is what the figure was presented to me by the Finance Director, which is related to the cost of borrowing to the town at the present time. The area is the Ballymead area, and the last time I was here, I read to you all of the roads that are involved. They have not changed. There's an option which is included in the vote for an apportionment over 25 years, which I read into the record at the last time, and that has not changed. Anybody who has a vacant lot can postpone the payment of the capital improvement fee until such time as a building permit is issued for the land. There'll be 3% interest on the deferred payment, and upon transfer of ownership of any property within Ballymead, the balance of the capital improvement fee is paid in full. The reason for that is that because it is a fee, it is a personal obligation of the owner. It's not something like a betterment, which can be transferred on through the tax bill. So I also have this vote. It's been sent over here. It's in word form, so if there's any changes to be made, we can make them tonight, and later in the evening you can sign your final vote, as you're so inclined. So those are the comments that I've made. I'm trying to be responsive to your questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Ballymead presentation?
Good evening, and I'd also like to add our gratitude to those of you who serve in elected positions and those of you who are our town employees. We Ballymead are not here to criticize the town, any individuals, any elected officials, but rather to present our case. And if this gentleman looks like me, it's because he's my son. I'm George Sanborn, and I've been a resident here in Falmouth for 20 years, and I've been living in Ballymead since 1997. Tonight, I represent the Ballymead Property Owners Association as a director of that association and a member of the Water Flow and Pressure Committee, which was formed a number of years ago. Tonight, we're here, I think most of these are Ballymead residents, to resolve the issue with the town of Falmouth imposing a $375,000 capital improvement fee or a $357,000 capital improvement fee, with interest or without interest. I'm not quite sure what the number was at the end. However, calling it a capital improvement fee or a betterment fee, as reported in the warrant and was reported in the annual report, has been put aside. We believe that the imposition of this fee is unjust, defies logic, and defies common sense. Why do we say that? Why do we, Ballymead residents, say that? Because it's not an improvement. It's not a betterment. And you know that some number of weeks ago, we met with a judge and some of you in a mediation session. You, the Board of Selectmen, authorized to sponsor an article compensating the residents of Ballymead $165,000 for the expenses that we, they incurred to increase the flow and pressure in their homes. This problem occurred in 2004 when the Ballymead was connected to the tower, the tower that is located in the Tech Park. And at that same time, Ballymead's booster pump station up on Sam Turner Road was shut down. Additionally, we feel it is unjust and illogical to pay this fee since Ballymead residents have paid the town of Falmouth $300,000 during a nine-year period from 1995 to 2005. I've told this to a few of you who I've met with in private. You were not aware of the fact that the residents were charged a 25% surcharge on our water bills. During that same nine-year period, all the operating costs, all the maintenance costs to operate that pump station were paid for by these residents, not the town of Falmouth. We paid that money through an assessment of our condominium fees or our association fees. I have a brief presentation, this'll take just about seven or eight minutes, that supports our petition to you to waive or delay this so-called improvement fee until after the We created a timeline, which time doesn't permit us going into this extensive timeline when Ballymead started, when we put in pumps, but rather, I thought we would just jump to what happened in 1999. The town of Falmouth hired the firm of Haley &amp; Ward to provide increased water flow and pressure... pressure to the Falmouth Technology Park as a priority. That's, I'm sorry, you're probably not able to read these statements, but this is one of the documents that we received from the DEP. The same reports indicate that Ballymead was being served, which is that next highlighted item, by its own booster pumping station, and was therefore not an issue. The next, that bottom highlighted item, I hope you can read that. The report further recommended that if Ballymead is ultimately connected to the new tower, it would require a booster pump station between the new tower and Ballymead. Finally, that red item, number three, the report states, and I'm quoting directly from that, "The expense of this expansion into Ballymead is not warranted at the present time." Was not warranted at the present time. But the Water System Capital Improvement Program should address funding for this project in the future. I'm an engineer, and I read that as a consulting engineer. That's good salesman. He said, "Guys, someday in the future, you ought to provide funding now. We'll come back to you in a few years, and you'll have the money." And so they did. The next exhibit, Bob, it should be four and five? I can't see it either.
That's the DEP letter.
Okay, that's the DEP letter. This gave the town permission to build a tank in the Technology Park with the continued comment highlighted again, that simply said, "If the high-service area, which was Ballymead, should be isolated and served by a new booster pumping station." That was 2000. In 2002, again, the DEP approved construction of the new Tech Park feed pump and SCADA system. Please note--
George, you'll have to take the microphone with you, so the folks at home can hear you.
Thank you, I will. Please note that this approved a booster pump station. The purpose of that booster pump station is to fill the newly constructed tank. As engineers, we used to call it a fill pump or a feed pump, but it was called a booster pump. Okay. Here's what a typical tower looks like. Feed pump, fill pump, or the town called it a booster pump, feeds the water tower. The pressure from the tower allows us to provide water to various heights within a complex. Without that pump, there is no tower. You have to have a pump. You have to have a fill pump. You have to have a booster pump, or whatever you want to call it. That's the pump that's there. That goes up and feeds that. But the two reports from the, that we presented earlier, you need to put a booster pump here to feed Ballymead, which was miles away and at an elevation of 190 feet. And within Ballymead, many of you are wondering, why didn't everybody complain? Because Mr. Heath is at elevation, what, 60, 50?
100.
All right. But we have some homes that are down around 50 or 60. I'm at 184. I had 18 PSI coming into my home one summer. The next slide, this was in 2003. Now we have Tatterton Howard. This firm informed the water department that the new Technology Park tank cannot be operated at the full 1 million gallon capacity due to the low demand in the Technology Park. They recommended that the tank be drained down to approximately 300,000 gallons, not a million, because there was not enough water demand, and they needed to prevent stagnation and other bacteria growing inside that tank. This next timeline, hopefully you can read that. I have that in front of me. In August of 2004, the town connected Ballymead to the Tech Park tank without installing a booster pump station, as reported in the 1999 Haley &amp; Ward study and the DEP permit. Immediately, when we were connected, more than 55 residents filed complaints with the Town of Falmouth about low water flow and water pressure. Then what happened? In 2004, all the way to 2010-- Austin Heath. Where's Austin? Stand up. Shen Baxter and many others unsuccessfully met with the town to try and resolve this problem. I won't go into what was said, who said what, they said, we said, because ultimately, we filed suit against the town, very reluctantly. I, like you, Mr. Murphy, love the town. We picked this town. My son lives in this town. My mother, believe it or not, at 100, lives in this town. My stepfather, a World War II veteran, lives in this town. We love the town. Between 2012 and 2013, we finally received copies of correspondence between the Town of Falmouth and the DEP. At the suggestion of the town's attorney, we met for mediation a few weeks ago. That successfully, and I'm reminded of what the judge told us, because I can say that, he said before the mediation session, in his experience, a successful mediation, at the end of the day, is when both parties walk away and they're disappointed with what happened. I'm sure the town was disappointed. Many of the residents said to Peg, our current chairman, and said to me, "Why did you accept that?" We wanted to end it. We wanted to move on, just as you wanted to move on. So we agreed with you. However, then what happened on the 5th, at that last selectments meeting? We tried to talk about this betterment fee. It's now a capital improvement fee. We accept that. We accept the vote. But in summary, ladies and gentlemen, there was no betterment. There was no improvement. Ballymead developers paid for that pump station, which provided superior service until 2004. The residents paid a surcharge of 25%, actually from 1987 to 2004. However, they assumed the maintenance from 1995 to 2004. That was the nine years that I referred to. And all of us paid a 25% surcharge on our water bills. The water tower located in Technology Park was built to solve the problems in the Technology Park. It's clear from the documents. It's clear. It said, "They have a problem in the Technology Park. We need to put and improve that flow of water. Where do we put a tank?" And the decision was made to put it in the Technology Park. And I guess I've said this to somebody tonight, and my wife said it to me this morning. She said, "What capital improvement fee or betterment fee did you impose on the Tech Park? That tower cost $2 million, according to the records that I have, well, that's what was budgeted. Could you tell me what fee you imposed on the people in the Technology Park? Or is it just Ballymead that had to pay for that pipeline?" Ballymead residents paid for all the maintenance, as I said, from 95 to 2004. We maintained that pump. We estimated from all of our water bills, that $300,000. And I ask you, if any of the points or any of these documents you disagree with or rebut, I ask that you provide us, Ballymead, with written documentation, not what you think or not what some engineers think, but show us the documents. We urge you to do the right thing, delay or defer it until after the November meeting. Thank you for your time.
Anyone in the public wish to offer some comment? Mr. Heath?
President?
Mr. Heath, do you want to defer to--
Go ahead. You want to go first? Sure. Peg Nicholson is our current president.
Okay.
Greetings, and thank you for your service. I have one question.
Ms. Nicholson, could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Peg Nicholson, president of the Ballymead Property Owners Association. My one question is this. The people who benefited from the construction of that pipe are supposed to be charged the cost. By what quantitative measure can you state that the people in Ballymead benefited? Not a qualitative measure, but what quantitative measure do you have that shows that any of us benefited? That's my question. I don't know that you have an answer tonight.
Well, the short answer, and I may defer to the superintendent of the DPW, but the short answer is that, is the explanation in the article was that it was intended to provide fire protection.
I don't care what it was intended to do. What did it do? And how can you quantify that it did what you intended? I have not seen any quantification that there was any improvement whatsoever, and I believe that if you're going to impose a 300 and some odd thousand dollar capital improvement fee on us, you owe it to us to quantify what benefit we received. Thank you.
I would just go back a little bit to the actual intent of the improvement fee to begin with, because the issue was and is fire protection. Although there were many, over the years, from Ballymead development, that didn't quite agree with that, what I would do is to go back a little bit over some of the actual results that had occurred. March 11th of 1999, this is an excerpt from one of the fire flow tests that was done up in Ballymead. This correspondence is pertaining to the flow test that the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department completed at Ballymead on March 9, 1999. Representatives from the Falmouth Fire and Water Departments were present, as well as personnel from your office. As you witnessed, we were able to maintain our goal of flowing 2,000 gallons of water per minute for less than five minutes. We flowed 1996 gallons per minute for a couple of minutes, and then reduced to less than 1,600 gallons per minute due to the failure of one pump. This flow was significantly reduced within two minutes, when the number two pump failed. After that, in 2001, excerpt from a fire flow test was conducted at Ballymead again. Fire department could not get the desired flow of 1,000 gallons a minute, because the residual went to zero PSI, or pounds per square inch, which is a vacuum. Before the desired flow, no fire pumps came on in the pump station. For us, the issue always was, and was back then, and during the course of this event, all about the fire protection. The excerpt from the Water Supply Systems Evaluation Methods from the U.S. Fire Administration, also endorsed by FEMA, recognizes under elevated and ground level storage, quote, "It should be noted that elevated storage provides the best, most reliable, and most useful form of storage, particularly for structural fire suppression." On the following page, with regard to direct pumping systems, which is a system that Ballymead had, the direct pumping system is considered obsolete today. This was dated in 2008. It has always been the concern of the town, that had the town accepted the Ballymead pump station as part of its municipal water system, you would have accepted, by all standards, an obsolete system that has unknown history of failure, especially in a catastrophic event, namely a fire. There are no do-overs when that happens. Fortunately, these were done only during a test. Had there actually been a fire in Ballymead, where there would have been loss of life, or injury, or loss of property, the consequences would have been significant, and the town would have owned those consequences. What the town has there now, what Ballymead has there now, is 1 million gallons of water elevated in the air. At 2,000 gallons a minute, that gives eight hours of full fire suppression capability, even presuming that the pump would not fill the tank during that time. However, the pump would fill the tank. One other thing I would mention, as was mentioned earlier, about a pump filling a tank in municipal water systems, that's how all tanks are filled, either with a booster pump, or the water sources are the pumps for the system. So even in Falmouth, Ballymead decide, for the rest of the town, those pumps are the source pumps that come on, fill the elevated tanks, the pumps shut off, and the systems ride off the pressure. So Ballymead's system is operating as is the rest of the town. Their pressure prior to the connection to the elevated tank was in the range of 45 to 90 pounds of pressure. After the tank, it was a systemic 10 PSI, or 10 pounds per square inch drop across the board, so they were at 35 to 80 PSI. Generally speaking, the town system, which is a separate system from Ballymead, because that's considered a high-service area, the town system is running about 30 to 80 PSI, with 50 to 60 PSI being the average. So the town, the system, was constructed for its intended purpose. It was not just for Tech Park, as mentioned in the same report in 1999 by Haley &amp; Ward. It was a high-service area that included Ballymead, Tech Park, and other adjacent areas. Further, the Ballymead pump station and its system, by their own engineers, thermal consulting engineers, back in the 1990s correctly identified, that system had no build-out capacity at all. Therefore, the senior living complex that the town had considered, it's a couple of years ago, up on 151, would not have been able to be connected to that system, had the town taken that system over at that time. What makes that project viable today is the fact that the system is connected to the elevated tank. So I empathize and understand the angst that Ballymead residents have had, but the town has worked and tried to work diligently over the years to resolve the issue with the installation of individual booster pumps. And in large-scale systems, whereas there are a limited number of impacted residents, that is the general accepted solution, and it is also identified as a generally accepted solution by DEP as well. So, bye.
Mr. Heath?
My name is Austin Heath. I live in a five-paddock circle in Ballymead. First of all, I brought some material that I'd like to read to you.
I hope it's not too much.
How many people do not have our original application to the Board of Selectmen for relief?
That's a question I don't know if we can answer, Mr. Heath. There's been a lot of documentation that's been provided to the board over the years. If there's something you'd like to enter into the record?
Yes, and I'll get, I have a number of copies here, but--
If you'd like to share them--
I don't want to indict you with paper, if you already have it. I know that Mrs. Moffin has it. Do you want this now?
Sure, I would love it, sure.
And I don't think you probably ever got back. One of the reasons for this is a lot of, there's a lot of data. One of the reasons for this is a lot of, there's a lot of data in there in background. I'm not going to go through it. Brent, do you have it?
I probably do, given my history with this issue, but--
I don't care about getting it again.
Well, at this point, I don't think you care if I get it again or not. I've only got a few hours left here, so. We can put one in the record.
Who gets that?
Give it to me and I'll, I'll put it in the packet and it will be in the record. Thank you.
Have you gone through that step or not? There's a lot of it. And I've got a lot more later. Basically, I'd like to respond to what you just heard from Mr. Jack, and there are some ifs, ands, and buts in there. First of all, one of the things you have to realize is, and I have documentation of this, and in some of this you'll get it, that the operating range from the, of the tank is one foot. That's about 30,000 gallons out of a million. After that, you begin to lose pressure. This means that we are as dependent on a pump, just a different pump, as we were when we had the old pump station. And I'm not necessarily advocating we go back to the old pump station. We do have a million gallons. I have correspondence, and I don't have it here, but neither does Mr. Jack, that indicates that Chief Prodeur was able to run the pump truck at 2,000 gallons a minute for 10 minutes. On that test, that is sufficient, because you're not drawing down a tank. We were getting the water, he was getting the water during normal hours, and he is not going to drain Long Pond. I figured out on a two-alarm fire that we would run out of water somewhere around four hours. That's two pumps, uh, trucks. Because of fill rate, I've been advised by Mr. Chapman when he was still here, and I have no reason to disbelieve it, was 1,450 gallons per minute. So you can all take pencil and paper and figure it out by yourself. It's about, it's over four, a little over four hours, and you're out of water. The pump cannot withstand it. Whether there were operational problems with the pump station, this was run by the town between 1989 and 1995. It had two fire pumps in addition to the regular supply, which was too low, two fire pumps of 1,750 gallons each. If you had a two-alarm fire, you could even, if they didn't come on automatically, you could go on and turn them on manually. You're not going to put out a fire in less than 10 minutes. It's just not going to happen. And one of the problems that Peg mentioned was, I'm giving you document, I can't give you that documentation because I didn't know that was going to come up, but you're going to find a lot of documentation in what I have supplied you and will supply you, because I believe in third-party evidence. Engineering companies that do tests over time, and these tests are observed by both parties and accepted at their time. But the real reason I'm up here is really because I'm very disappointed. During this process, there have been a lot of statements. And part of it is the history of this. I had the privilege of knowing Tom Carl. He was, I don't know how many people, if anyone, in this room remember him. This is a real gentleman, a lawyer, longtime resident, good friend, one of the earliest buyers in Ballymead before the bankruptcy. A longtime friend, Mr. Ramsey, who was the head of Longchamp. He knew what was going on. Diane Thompson was a longtime, how many people know Diane Thompson here? I think probably everyone there. She was a fine lady. She was a consultant of Falmouth Woods, she was a consultant to the Falmouth Land Company, which was really the FDIC. She was a consultant to CLSV, but she knew a lot of how things came about. And I'm going to give you a copy of this later. That the developers, they told me, wanted to have a private company and have income for years. I mean, this would go on forever. And they applied for a private water company to the DPU. The DPU wouldn't even accept the application. Didn't accept it. And said, there's a town water supply hookup to it. So Diane Thompson worked with, actually, the Fire Department also didn't want it to be on town water, not a private system. You will have all of this. That they hired an engineering company. The town, Dick Witt, who was water director at that time, didn't like it, and nominated, and they hired E.J. Flynn. E.J. Flynn sold part of their business to Thermo Engineering, which reports you have in there. Basically, Dick Witt, under Bill Owen, built that. And about all Falmouth Woods Development Company had to say was to write checks. That was their job. They paid for it. They made an agreement that's on the Registry of Deeds. It's a series of documents. One of them, quite simply, is an easement over what is now called Parcel E or where the pump station is located. It's a perpetual easement to run pipes, put in equipment. They did not need to own the real estate. CLSV still placed taxes on it, I think, not very big ones, but they can't do anything. All the equipment belongs to the town. It's their equipment and always has been. Two other agreements, they all, incidentally, I don't, we don't own anything and never have. The residents have never, ever owned anything in that water system. We all paid a connection fee to town water. But basically, when you, there were two extension agreements, and both of them, both of them said that when the water was turned on, it was acceptance. That's on the Registry of Deeds. That is, in effect, an agreement.
Mr. Heath, I need you to focus on the question of the fees and how it pertains to the town meeting vote. What I don't want to do is start retreading history here. If you could focus your comments on what we're looking at this evening with respect--
Actually, it does tie in.
Okay.
It ties in because there's also a question of whether--
Chairman, there are a lot of folks, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, there are a lot of folks talking in the audience, and I'm having a little problem focusing on what Mr. Heath is saying.
If you could all keep it down, and Mr. Heath, if you could focus your comments, please, and try to get to the point, it would be appreciated.
Part of the justification for the fee has always been that this was a private system. That is one of the justifications for that vote or the vote that we all relied on that was on to the town records. What I am bringing about is the fact that Tom Carl said early on that if this were a public system, and always was a public system, then there could not be a betterment if the town made a unilateral choice to change the connection or the supply. Remember, we paid the town to connect to their water system. Now, where does the disappointment come in? And this is what I'm trying to bring about on this. There are a number of things that got passed that I don't think are particularly valid. One is the ownership of the system. It's always been a town system. The turnover of the operation to CLSV is not recorded at the DEP, and CLSV had no licenses, not a single solitary license. Bill Thorpe was a great guy, ex-serviceman, retired, did the maintenance work at the clubhouse, and ran the pump station. The town has had the responsibility of running, I believe, that pump station from the day it was turned on. The extension agreements are part of it. Even the town meeting, what can we rely on? If we can't rely on what's on the record, what can we rely on? There was a maintenance agreement. The company that signed it went bankrupt, but that should not, doesn't affect the ownership. It affects the cost of maintenance. It just doesn't pertain to it. There probably should have never been. Secondly, when we try to rely on the record, we run right up against it, the published part of the record by the town was what was printed, that it was a betterment issue subject to betterment law. We should be able to rely on that. To correct the minutes of a meeting 12 years after the meeting is incredible. How can you do, how can you say that we should pay an improvement fee when evidently the only person that had this was town council? Over and over again, we find these things come up, that we are supposed to believe what's credible. The two best criteria for quality of service are, first of all, the Thermo Engineering report, which you all have or should have, and it sets forth the criteria that the town set forth for operation, which, the second one is Tatum Howard's report. Tatum Howard's report compares itself to the Thermo Engineering report, but you can follow all the figures in the Thermo Engineering report, but the Tatum Howard report did not use the hydro coefficient. And there could be some theory that you don't have to use it, but not when you compare it to another report that's, on a comparable basis, they've overstated the water flow in that report by 10%. And you go to any outside engineering company that you want, or graduate engineer, and have them run the figures. We've been told over and over again it's a 10 or 12 PSI. Jim Markowski, if he's here--
Not here. Wrap it up.
Let--
No.
Yes.
I don't take your orders.
Mr. Heath, I am going to ask you to wrap it up.
Therefore, I think that this requires a lot more work on the Board of Dis settlement. I think it's a very good question of what can we rely on? How do you deal with a town if they keep refuting stuff that's on the record, not made up? This is settled, but I don't think we should pay this fee, especially in light of the fact that for nine years, we got charged a surcharge of $300,000. That would be us paying over $600,000 to this town, and we have no benefit to show. Thank you.
I'll start over here. Then, that's fine. That's fine, no problems, but I just want to start with people who haven't spoken. Wait, 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 first, Mr. Heath, if you could step away from the lecterns, that you have to speak into the microphone or the folks at home aren't going to hear, please identify yourself--
Robert Tamborn, Ballymead. My question is--
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again.
Robert Tamborn, Ballymead.
Thank you, sir.
The question is, was the station that was taken offline illegal, unlicensed, under state license when it went offline? Could it have been made, if it was, could it have been made to be in compliance with state law for less money than is being charged to the residents of Ballymead now? So in other words, were Ballymead residents given the option to keep the station that they had maintained themselves at their own expense for many years? Or were they simply switched to another station for reasons that no one here is quite sure what happened? So my question simply is, was that station that was taken offline in compliance with the state DEP? And if it was not in compliance, could the residents of Ballymead have the documentation that would show that it was not in compliance at the time? Thank you.
I'm not sure if we can answer that one, because in part, I'm a little concerned that we're starting to retread issues that are so old that, I mean, we're talking, well, hold on, we're talking about something, that station was turned off over a decade ago. And I understand that there's a long and lengthy history here with this, but I really wish folks would, let's try to focus on some of the pertinent issues. The station was turned off. I can't go back and change that. This board can't go back and change that. And the fact of the matter is, is that this was voted by a town meeting. So I need you folks to focus on the issue of the betterment, or not the betterment, because it is obviously a capital improvement fee. It was voted by a town meeting. If we can focus the comments on that, please. I understand there's a history here, folks, but some of this history is, I mean, we could spend days going over this, believe me. I've gone years going over this.
But Mr. Jack gave an entire speech that he turned, this station was turned off in favor of the tower.
And he's already, he's already provided testimony to the fact that the recommended, that FEMA and-- that FEMA and the recommended fire protection standards are for an elevated tower and not a pump station. He's already provided testimony to the fact--
Sir--
Excuse me. Let me finish. He's already provided testimony to the fact that that station did, on multiple occasions, fail to provide adequate fire protection water. So, that question has been asked and answered.
So, you're saying it was out of compliance at the time?
That's what it sounds like to me.
So, so, I don't know if the residents of Ballymead knew that the station that was supplying their water was out of compliance at the time that it was switched over. I don't think that was ever made clear to the residents of Ballymead. I'm not sure if you think it was made--
I am not privy to what town meeting voted in 2002, but clearly, they thought that there was a necessity for fire protection for a tower to provide fire protection for the Ballymead area, else they would not have voted for this.
It's why we voted for it.
So--
It's on the explanation. It's on the explanation of the article.
Well--
For adequate fire protection.
Mr. Samborn.
I will be brief. Yes, fire towers, towers of water are the preferred. They're not mandated. They are simply preferred. Never in any of the reports that I presented is there any discussion of fire protection. None. Zero. There isn't any. And the reason there wasn't any is that from 1999 to 2004, there were tests. 99, there were some problems. 2000, none. 2001, 2002, we have the data. So, I can make the statement, Mr. Jack, the same as you can.
To you, Mr. Chair.
Five, five years it was operated, for five years. So, if you're insisting that during those five years, we were at risk, how in good conscience could you have let us operate a system that didn't provide adequate fire protection for five years? And the reason you did is it wasn't true. It did. We have the data also. There were tests after tests, hydrants after hydrants. And I said to you earlier, we're not going to get into that. And the reason I don't want to get into that is we had mediation. We were done. We've simply asked you to look at the facts that have been presented. The tower was put in to establish a system at the Technology Park, which is the most significant area with inadequate service. The expense of expansion into Ballymead is not warranted at this time, but you should provide for a capital improvement. We did not have a problem. We operated it for five years. That's the point. There was no fire issue. None. Zero. We would appreciate your thinking about what we have presented with documents that you filed with the town, correspondence that came to you from consulting engineers, from the DEP. Clear. We understand them, and I know you, deep down, understand them. So, we ask simply that you discuss it and defer it until the November meeting. And thank you for the two of you for your service. And--
Anyone else?
I just want to make one more point. Mr. Jack talked about pre-tower tests. I'm still looking for quantitative evidence of what happened after we were connected to the tower, and what kind of tests prove that we had benefited from the connection to the tower.
Mr. Jack, do we have any fire protection tests that were done subsequent to the erection of the tower?
Yes, and they are fully documented in reports, but those were done after it was connected to the tower. In the instances that I'm aware of, the fire protection was actually better. Not only reliable, but the actual data set was better on the fire protection. That is fully documented, yes.
And perhaps you could provide those documents for the record at some point in the near future?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Those should be provided before any votes taken.
Good evening. I'm Joe Novaleen, and I'm one of the newer residents of Ballymead. I've been there three years. As I indicated at the last meeting, I have been so impressed between the last meeting and this one with the amount of work that's been done by the residents of Ballymead over the years to document this problem. And being an engineer in my previous life, I also can understand a lot of the statistical information that is going back and forth. But you're not here to make an engineering decision. Those decisions, whatever they are, have been done. You've arrived at a settlement, but in my mind, you're now confronted with a bit of an ethical problem. Two questions that came up at the last meeting. The first of all was, why would you people put up with this water pressure problem for eight to 10 years if it was so huge? I would have done something about it. You don't think they've been doing something about it after everything you've heard that's been presented? They have been fighting to correct this problem from day one. Another question from your board last meeting was, we did offer settlements. You were shown specifically that, and quantitatively, that those offers were not adequate to solve the problems for at that time, fewer numbers of residents, not enough money to even put a booster pump in their home. To me tonight, you're not facing an engineering decision here, or a technical decision. You're facing 274 homeowners who don't feel they've had a capital improvement. It's obvious there's problems and issues on both sides. To me, the ethical thing is to waive this whole issue, get rid of this capital improvement fee, put it to bed, as we said last week. And the only other thing I'm going to add, and I don't know whether, I don't have the answer to this. Is Ballymead the only ones that are on this pipeline? Or are there other neighborhoods that are on this line? Are we the only ones getting water from this line?
Through the chair, we can get that answer for you.
Okay. Because if we aren't, where's everybody else? If that's the case. But in any case, you've got an ethical issue here, not a technical issue, in my opinion. We're hoping you do the right thing.
Thank you. Mr. Jack, could you answer that, please?
The 16-inch transmission main connects Ballymead, however, that the town owns the distribution system. Any other connections could connect to that system entirely. At the present time, for that particular main, Ballymead right now is the only one connected to it, yes.
For that main, but the tower that's in the Tech Park that services the Tech Park, does it service any other areas in that vicinity, or is it just the Tech Park and the Ballymead neighborhood?
Present service is Tech Park and Ballymead, but there are other areas identified within the high-pressure service area that that tank will ultimately serve. A good example would have been up on 151 if the senior center had gone in up there. A main would have been extended to accommodate that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the article right here is saying that $530,000 is to fund the water transmission main.
Yes.
It's not funding the tower. It's not funding the tower that's in the park. It is funding the main--
Yes.
--that connects the tower to Ballymead. And that's what we're doing, the capital improvement fee, is to cover the cost of that main. Is that correct?
Correct. With respect to Tech Park itself, the 3 million gallon tank that was constructed up in Tech Park in 1987, that was providing their existing service, all of that area was part of a town-owned system at that time. So, building the tank was fixing that.
Anyone else in the back? Mr. Samborn? Something new?
I'm wondering if you could repeat that last sentence. Your last sentence.
Go ahead, Mr. Jack.
Putting the tower in the Tech Park to fix what?
Mr. Samborn, please.
That the existing tank in Tech Park, the 3 million gallon existing tank, was built in 1987, at the same time that Tech Park was built, and that that all is part and was part of the town system. So, part of the Tech Park tank, the new one that went up, was to correct that problem--
Okay.
--because they had insufficient pressure.
Okay. Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yes. Yes, he did. Thank you. Insufficient pressure in the Tech Park.
Okay. Something new, Mr. Heath?
This is exactly why I stressed the ownership issue from the very beginning, because the same thing would be true of Ballymead if, in fact, what is on the public record of the registry of deeds defined the ownership under the terms that the town agreed to at the time. If they don't get a fee, we shouldn't get a fee.
Anyone else? Last chance, folks. Okay. All right. So, for the board, we need to make some decisions, whether we decide to proceed with this this evening, whether we decide not to proceed with it, as has been requested of us. Thoughts, comments? Anybody want to start?
I'd be happy to start. I understand what the folks in Ballymead are saying, but I also understand town meeting. In 2002, town meeting voted to authorize spending up to $530,000 to run a transmission main. It has nothing to do with the water tower because all of the taxpayers paid for that water tower. Everybody in this community paid for the water tower. It was for the transmission main. This was clearly spelled out in 2002 by town meeting. Everybody in Ballymead had an opportunity to comment on that at town meeting in 2002. I wasn't the one that put forward this article in 2002, but I am the one on the board of selectmen now that we're looking to implement the fee. We do these fees all over town, and it is not just Ballymead. In this case, it happens to be for a water transmission line. Sometimes we do it for specific, I know one recent thing was the Woods Hole Golf Course wanted additional fire protection. They had to run a main to be able to get to that, that particular clubhouse. That was several years ago. They paid for that. No one's looking to kill anybody in Ballymead. However, someone's got to pay for this article. And is it really fair to the taxpayers who put forward and said, "We're going to vote to run a transmission line, and we'll give up to $530,000," which we only spent $350,000, "but we want the money back. We're going to loan that money out to be able to run that line to Ballymead"? It is hard to separate. There are a lot of emotional issues in this. Those of us who have been on this board for several years, Mr. Putnam, myself, Mrs. Flynn, have been involved in this. And there is a host of he said, she says out there. I understand that a lot of folks think that it is all about water pressure. In your mind, it is about water pressure. What that article says, and look on the bottom, it's related to fire protection. And that's the idea, and that's what folks in this town voted for at town meeting, to spend the money. We have a fiduciary responsibility, based on a town meeting article, to get back that money. In the past, if it hasn't come forward, shame on the boards, shame on whomever was the town manager at the time. But ultimately, we have a Congress in this town and an executive branch. We're the executive branch. If Congress voted something to appropriate this money and wants the money back, this board has a fiduciary responsibility to get the money back. You have an opportunity, in my mind, to go to fall town meeting and do a petition article to change this. Whether or not that works, I don't know. But I don't think that we have the right to arbitrarily, now that this is before us, to say, "We're not going to impose this fee." I feel your plight, but in my mind, it's always been about fire protection. Not everybody in this town has 80 PSI. There are a lot of folks in this town that live with 30 PSI. I can tell you, that whole Craggy Ridge area, that whole West Falmouth area, where it's high, has a lower water pressure. I don't know what my water pressure is. I know this, that what you never have, you never miss. You had a high water pressure. That was because of a pump station. But if you had moved in there and have the current water pressure when you moved in, you would probably not know that it was any different. I don't disagree with you. And I'm not going to talk about what we've done in the past in regard to water pressure, because this isn't about that. This is a separate issue, and this is about running a transmission line. Everybody in this town paid to build that water tower. I don't think it's fair for everybody in this town to pay for a transmission line to your development, specifically that was outlined in the town meeting warrant article. I would suggest that the board impose the fee, but wait to the implementation till May of next year, the second set of bills next year. You have every right to try to put forward a petition article at town meeting. Whether town meeting would vote that is up to them, but that would be my suggestion with the board. I think it's fair in regard to what I see as the facts, meaning the facts that were presented from a town meeting vote. I understand your emotions, but this is not an emotional issue. This is something that is on black and white. This is something that town meeting has said to us that you need to impose. When it's here in front of us, I don't think I can shirk my fiduciary responsibility by saying, "I can abolish it." I've told many folks in this town, "I'm not the wizard. I can't make things go away." We have processes to go through, and you have an ultimate process. You could go back to town meeting to get that changed. But unfortunately, my thoughts are that we have to impose the fee. Thank you.
Quite simply, I would echo your sentiment, that I don't think we have any option but to impose it. However, we do have the option on the timeline.
So, could I make a motion, Mr. Chairman? My motion would be that we would impose the capital improvement fee on the homeowners in Ballymead. Do we have the written motion here?
Do we have, Mr. Duffy has said he had the documentation. Folks, please.
Here's a copy. I gave you a copy last week. To comply with Mr. Murphy's motion, as I believe--
Folks, excuse me. If you'd like to speak, you can always raise your hand. But let's not have any sidebar conversations, please.
Mr. Chairman, I left with the board a copy of a motion last week. The, you simply make a change from November 2014, this is in paragraph 5, to May 2015, and that will comport with Mr. Murphy's motion to be seconded by the judge.
Could we--
Yeah.
--see the copy so we can have the details for the record? So, this was what we had discussed during the last meeting. The principle would be, well, Mr. Murphy, you're making the motion. I'll allow you to--
In accordance with the provisions of Article 32 passed by the town meeting of November 2002, a copy of which is attached here into Exhibit A, the board of selectmen of the town will file with hereby adopt a capital improvement fee as follows: principal of $357,939.61 with an interest rate of 3%. The capital improvement fee will be added to the water bills of Ballymead neighborhood on the following roads: Falmouth Woods Road, Deven Court, Fairway Point Road, Equestrian Lane, Longshank Circle, Keen Ridge Road, Falmouth Ridge Road, Summit Lane, Wallford Circle, Sorrel Circle, Saddleback Lane, Hill and Plain Road, Martingale Circle, Paddock Circle, Green Tree Circle, and Highwood Lane. Amounts per service connection, the Ballymead neighborhood, which benefits from the improvement made under the authority of Article 32, consists of the following land uses: single family dwellings, 258; vacant lots, 17; condominium units, 29; association units of 1; golf course and clubhouse, 2. The total number of the system units with individual water services is 307. The capital improvement fee to be charged to each pri-- The capital improvement fee to be charged to each property unit is $1,165.93. Appropriatement: the capital improvement fee shall be due and payable in full with the water bill issued on or about May 2015. On or before the due date of said water bill, the property owners may elect a payment schedule over a period of 25 years if they so specifically request to the Town of Falmouth Water Division. Once the selection has been made, the payment method may not thereafter be changed, and the balance of the principal due, together with interest as asked for said, shall be paid by installments over the period with the provisions that the balance due, be paid in full at any time thereafter. Subsequent connections: any land not built upon at the time of the establishment of the capital improvement fee may, upon appropriation of the Board of Selectmen, receive an extension of the time from the payment of the fee until the land is built upon. Interest in the rate of 3% per year shall be paid annually on the fee from the establishment of the time of the payment and shall be collected as a surcharge upon the connection of the fee with the land is built upon. Transfer of ownership: the capital improvement fee, along with any interest due, shall be paid in full upon the sale of any property, transfer of ownership of the water service. And this would be adopted on this 19th day of May 2014.
I second, but I also want to discuss possibly amendment of saying, and the payment in full can be done without any interest on that, with that first made bill.
I would add that as well.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion by the board? I'll entertain some last comments, but I'm going to ask everybody to try to keep it civil. I understand this is an emotional issue. I've managed to go six years here, a couple terms as chair, and not have to throw anybody out, and I don't want to have to do it tonight. So if you'd like to have any last comments, I'll give the audience that opportunity.
My quick question is, you know, this was passed in 2002, so here we are in 2014. It could have been delayed to any other time. And other than that, I'll just say that I think that the residents of Valley Mead would not agree that this was a betterment or a capital improvement in any way. And I think that I just want to put that objection on the record and say, "Hey, the service that they got from the town is now worse than it was before. Despite tests and other engineering reports, the quality of life for the residents of Valley Mead is now worse, and they're being asked to pay more for a worse service." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I thought I made it real clear that we wouldn't discuss what had happened, who said what, and what kind of pressures. But it's outrageous that this gentleman, Mr. Murphy, compared us 30 PSI... I don't know where the hell... Pardon me. I don't know where he got those numbers. I, George Sanborn, swear to you that I have connected to my home a $1,000 recorder, strip recorder. We've connected to various homes in Valley Mead. I have experienced 18 PSI coming into my home. I live in a two-story home. I cannot get water in the summer when the residents are there. It's not 30. Don't be making up numbers. Many of us, many of us, have had to put pumps in our homes in order to get water flowing to our second floors, just water, drinking water. I, George Sanborn, swear that I had a whole house filter in my home. I had to remove it in order to continue to get water in my home. I took the filter out of my refrigerator, and I drink, and I told you that last time. I drink the town water because I can't get enough flow. I've bought thousands of dollars' worth of new fixtures. I'm illegal because I drilled out all the flow restrictors, and I told you, Ms. Moffett, that I did that. So please refrain from outlandish, outrageous comparisons to somebody on Craggy Ridge and that we only have 30 PSI. We don't, and we didn't. That's why we're here. That's why we came to you. That's why we presented facts to you. We don't disagree, but as has been said, you've sat here for 12 years. Now, all of a sudden, it's urgent before you leave that you impose this. Oh, we can go before the board. I'm sorry, but it is a disappointment, Mr. Murphy. It is. So please don't make these statements, ever.
Ms. Nicholson, I have you.
This is why I'm disappointed. Evidently, you people have had this proposed resolution for some time, but no one has shared it with us. This is why we had the betterment issue, the original 32 that we saw. They said it was a betterment. Time has elapsed. Betterments have protections. We didn't see this until just the last few days. We don't even have an attorney that gets into this stuff. Why don't we get it ahead of time? Why do these things come up at the last minute? The last time I spoke, at the last meeting that this was discussed, and I got home on Friday, Thursday night from Europe, slept for part of Friday, and what I said was basically what I knew from having been involved in this a long time. I don't think towns should operate that way. When they're dealing with people... How many people do you think ever saw this in Valley Mead? When Article 32 came up in Town Meeting, and we should have been there, the only exposure I had to Town Meeting was the original warrant in four-point type in the Falmouth Enterprise. The residents were never told that this was going to be on the warrant, and they should have been. Probably didn't legally have to do it. They published it in the newspaper. But nobody in Valley Mead that I know of even knew that was there. We didn't even know that we were paying a surcharge, most of us, because it didn't show on the water bill for all those years. It didn't show. It wasn't until the turnover, and I was elected to the advisory board, which became the real board, when they turned over the community association to the residents, that I realized that we were paying Valley Mead to run the pump station, and we were paying the town a surcharge at exactly the same time. And you wonder why I'm disappointed, and you wonder why I went on too long, and you wonder why you have unhappy people. That's the reason. Thank you.
Ms. Nicholson, I had you next, and then the next row.
One further question. In March of 2008, there was a vote of the Board of Selectmen to assume ownership of the Valley Mead water system, which we assert you owned all along, and to improve the water system in Valley Mead. What have you done to improve the water system in Valley Mead since you took this vote in light of now assessing us this? And my second point is, how is it that you feel compelled to collect the money, but you didn't bother to not spend the money until such time as you had determined and established a program to collect the capital improvement fee? You're just doing that now. So how is it that you follow Town Meeting votes on some parts but not others?
Margaret Freeswick, Hill and Plain, Valley Mead. I understand the process of Congress and executive boards, but what I don't understand, and I understand that this is an article before you, you've got to make a decision, but what I don't understand is why that decision has to happen tonight. What Mr. Sanborn asked was that you either defer or you waive. And I'm unclear about why the vote needs to happen tonight. I've sat on boards as you are tonight, and there was a lot of convincing evidence that would lead me to think that perhaps this conversation needs to continue. And I'm curious about why this has to happen tonight.
I think I can answer a few questions, but before I answer that question, I want to see if anyone else has anything to say, because we do have to move on here. So I will answer your question, but if you'll just give me a moment. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything before we wrap up? Mr. Heath, you've had opportunities. I really want to give other people opportunities at this point. Anyone else? Okay. Before I call for the vote from the board, and I will answer your question, ma'am, you, sir, are absolutely correct. This is an ethical dilemma. This is something that has been, for lack of a better term or phrase, hanging over my head for the length of my term that I've been on this board. It is something that I inherited, and it is something that may very well be inherited by the board that follows. What happened in 2002... I do believe Mr. Murphy was here in 2002.
2003.
2003. So I think in 2002, the members of this board were not even involved in this process. And sometimes that happens in government, that there is a turnover of the officials. So I honestly cannot provide an answer as to why this wasn't done in 2002, why it wasn't done properly. We have a new town manager. We have an entirely new board. I think probably a significant number of the people in Town Meeting probably don't even remember this vote because they weren't there for it. And so I cannot explain why it wasn't done. What I can explain why it is being done is because during my term, during my six years on this board, there had been a lot of loose ends that we've had to tie up. And, you know, I have this mug here that I got a few years back at a Christmas party. It says, "Damned if I do and damned if I don't." And I am sympathetic to all of you, and Mr. Heath knows that. He has bent my ear over this for the last six years. But when I was elected, I took an oath of office, and I swore on a Bible. I actually made a point of doing that. A lot of people, when they take the oath of office, certainly at this level of government, don't go so far as to swear on a Bible. I did, because I take that oath very seriously. And whether I agree with this article or not, it was, as mentioned this evening earlier, this is what Town Meeting voted for. And I would be derelict in my duty if I did not take some steps to make sure that this vote that Town Meeting took was followed. Why are we doing it tonight as opposed to not delaying this? Well, to some extent, we are delaying this. We are... The motion is that nothing is going to be asked of you folks for another year. It gives you essentially two Town Meetings, the one in November and the one next spring in April, to make your case to Town Meeting that this should be rescinded. Because if it's rescinded, then this board has nothing to take any action on. But if we don't do this this evening, my concern is, as I said just a few moments ago, that this will be inherited by another board. I think we'd all like to see this finalized and done and put behind us. And certainly with respect to the water pressure, I think that's been addressed. A few of you have asked about water pressure. Well, that's what the settlement, the mediation settlement addressed, was the water pressure. This was a separate issue, and it remains a separate issue, and it has to be dealt with separately. And as sympathetic as I am to all of you and to the issue that this has been, and Mr. Heath knows, and you've been there right with me, we were in some meetings. Shen was there as well, where we had meetings with the former town manager, with the former water superintendent, with Mr. Jack, where we went over tests and retests and trying to come up with some sort of a solution to this issue. And we're finally just about there, folks. And I'm sorry that we have to put you through this process of going to Town Meeting, but that is the law, and that is what I swore to do when I took this job, was to uphold the law. And so there is an ethical dilemma here. But for me, the ethical dilemma is, do I follow my oath of office or not? And I have to follow it, folks. That's what I was sworn to do. Ms. Moffett?
I've been rather quiet, but I've been listening. And I just want to say to each one of you that I would congratulate you for sticking to the issue. And last time that I spoke to all of your neighbors, that I would say, "Why did it last so long?" I think tonight's the night. And I think that you have all the options of taking this to Town Meeting. It started when Town Meeting agreed that there would be a payment. It has taken 12 years to come to another agreement that Town Meeting made. We were all very different in 2002. And as we come to 2014, we live a different life. We want different things, and we especially want them right now. So I would say that I would have taken the vote at the last meeting. So I would endorse that we take the vote, and you keep the information that you have and the discussions you have, and you show up at Town Meeting, and you present them to Town Meeting, and they will tell the selectmen what they have to do. So I thank each one of you for coming, the information, the integrity of what you're saying, but I believe the vote needs to be this evening.
It will be. We have a motion and a second. Any last discussion amongst the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It is unanimous. Thank you all. The board is going to take a five-minute recess.